Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming along this evening for this first scrutiny panel session of the new municipal year. In the event of an emergency, we hope there are none. There are no practice evacuations planned for this evening, but if an alarm does sound, please go down behind the town hall via the main staircase or the back staircase to the High Street or the car park behind the town hall in St Runwald Street. This meeting is broadcast live over the internet on the council's YouTube channel and will also be available to view afterwards on demand. Discreet use of mobile phones and other devices is permitted, but you are requested to set them to silent, please. If they go off, you will be fined a lot of money for the Mayor's charity, and I'll make sure that happens. So please turn the sounds off. We may break this evening at 7.30 for a short comfort break, but it will depend on the course of events. I am councillor Darius Laws. I am the Chair of the Scrutiny Panel for this municipal year. I'm also a City of Colchester councillor for Rural North Ward, and I'm going to introduce other members around the table, please. So on my right here.
Denis Willits, Leexton, Braeswick Ward.
Thomas Rowe, Rural North Ward.
Sam McLean, Newtown and Christchurch.
Fay Smalls, Old Heath, The Hive and Rowhedge.
Sam McCarthy, representing Shrub End Ward.
Tracey Arnold, representing Stanway Ward.
Alison Jay, Portfolio Holder for Economy Transformation and Performance.
Chisara Cosma, Programme and Performance Manager.
David King, Leader of the Council.
Councillor Michelle Burrows, Portfolio Holder for Culture, Leisure and Heritage.
Owen Howell, Democratic Services Officer.
Richard Block, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you, everyone. We have no substitutions. We have no urgent items, although it's a grey area because an urgent item did come to our attention, which we'll talk about shortly, which might well be subject to something under the work programme, because it's an urgent matter, but it's not specifically going to be talked about now. Do the councillors have any declarations of interest at all they wish to declare? I see none. We will move on to minutes. It says no minutes to approve at this meeting, but I think there are, aren't there?
Apologies, Mr Chairman. Yes, that's my error. In fact, we have a series of sentences.
We have quite an extensive series of minutes. My prompt sheet has just been updated. So I'm quite happy to do these on block. They are for February last, they're February 14th, March 3rd, 2023, 14th of March, 2023, 15th of March, 2023. Is this right?
That's it, yes. It's 14th February, 3rd of March, 14th of March, 15th of March, and finally 24th of May.
Okay. Does any member wish to pick apart, interrogate, or add anything to any of those, or can we take them on block to be an accurate reflection of those meetings? And I appreciate some members are new to the panel, but can I see the majority are satisfied that they are accurate?
Agreed.
Thank you, members. Okay. Right. We will move on to general have your say. I'm going to look now to the crib sheet to see who wishes to have a chat with us this evening. First up, it appears we have Karina Cooper. I don't know if that's a Ms, Miss, or Miss. Karina Cooper, if you're here, you're most welcome to join us and have three minutes, using the microphone at all times, please, just so that those who need to hear with the amplification devices can. After three minutes, I may or may not respond. Someone in the room may or may not respond, and then you will get a subsequent minute if you need to. But thank you for coming along this evening, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. On the 21st of March, Members of the Public raised concerns to the Environment and Sustainability Panel over net zero initiatives. Evidence was supplied on how environmentally devastating lithium mining is for the proposed electric vehicle batteries, not to mention the cost in human suffering, child slavery for the cobalt required. Serious fire safety concerns were also raised. We've not received a response to our follow-up emails from either the previous panel or the new one. We therefore ask this committee to scrutinise why the Environment and Sustainability Panel are pushing ahead with environmentally harmful plans, ignoring safety concerns, and the council's own anti-slavery policy. It's critical that we can trust our local councils, as trust in government as a whole has been lost. It's imperative we don't make the same mistakes with climate change that were made with Covid. Despite propaganda on mainstream media falsely messaging to the contrary, it wasn't Covid, but government actions that have caused harm. Wildly inaccurate forecasting and unreliable testing of healthy people caused fear, financial hardship, and unforgivable abuses to the people, all under the guise of protecting our health. On the 19th of March 2020, before the first lockdown, UK Health Security Agency declared Covid was not a high consequence infectious disease. Despite this, Matt Hancock talked of deploying the next variants to frighten the pants off people, clearly demonstrating intent to use deception to manipulate through fear. Little wonder that trust is gone. Now a man-made climate emergency has been declared, but not debated. Like with Covid, discussion is censored, and highly qualified scientists, including Nobel Prize-winning physicists, who see climate change as naturally occurring, are dismissed. Silencing experts and cherry-picking the data does not make the science settled. We must all protect our environment from pollution and unsustainable practices, but worryingly, a lot of the proposed green solutions are anything but. As well as electric vehicles, we're dismayed to see Colchester City Council officers insisting councillors pass planning for environmentally toxic solar farms on precious farmland. We have good people in this council who are trying to do their best for Colchester, but to get government funding, you're required to enforce policies that aren't always good for us. The overdevelopment of the city beyond the capacity of the infrastructure is a case in point. How can the council be objective about doing what's right for Colchester with large financial incentives from the government? If any faith is to be restored in our crumbling political system, it has to have a solid foundation at local level. We must have a council we can trust to do what is right. We therefore request this committee thoroughly scrutinise how environmental policies and planning decisions are made, and to make sure environmentally detrimental initiatives aren't being passed because of financial incentives or beliefs based on manipulated statistics. We look forward to a transparent, informative response. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation there, and obviously you're perfectly entitled to come here and present your views. Just for the record, I didn't make it very clear earlier, but this is my first time checking this panel. I will be fair and inclusive, but I will also obviously have to confer with what remit and the rules are. You're asking me things that I know that the Cabinet may be making decisions on, so there is a Cabinet meeting tomorrow. Actually, you make a very, very interesting point, and I will give you this on a personal level, because we all should be mindful about the provenance of what's in supply chains. And I was studying, forensically, the ingredients labelled on the back of various products I was purchasing in Aldi last night, and so I think your lithium ion point and where batteries are made and come from is something that we should all be alive to. I'm just not sure that I am in a position this evening to make you a promise about what this panel will scrutinise in any timeframe, but to say that your presentation has been useful stimulation, and we are putting together a work programme in which we will look at various things that this authority does with the scrutiny panel. There is Cabinet tomorrow, that is the executive function, so I don't know if you've got anything in your diaries tomorrow, but it might be that you would wish to present to those guys, because there are decision-makers there. But I would invite you to respond to that if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. I won't be able to attend tomorrow, and I certainly wouldn't be able to put something together that quickly. There have been worrying things in terms of counter-disinformation and things heading from top down, so I think we're all aware that narratives are being pushed and algorithms through social media are suppressing dissenting voices. I would like reassurance that we still have at least an illusion of democracy, and we are not living in an authoritative dictatorship, because really, that's how it's been feeling. We are here to challenge the system, because we are watching what's going on, we are not happy with what's going on, and we are not going to be silenced, and we will continue to make our voices heard. What would work best for us is if we could work with all of you and look at the data and ignore the scientific manipulation that's got corporate interests at heart. Thank you.
Thank you for that response. Of course, you know, if you are Colchester residents, you can always ask your individual Ward councillors to ask questions in a public forum of the Members of the Cabinet, and that happens five times a year or so at full council, where we ask questions about absolutely anything. So if you've got a particular thing you want raised in a public capacity, then that's another tool in your armoury.
The difficulty we have is when we're following up with emails, we're getting no response.
Well, I mean, email culture is toxic at the moment. We're all overburdened with them, and you know, people are sending emails to chase emails. I think actually, you know, where there are public forums, where you can do it face-to-face, as you're doing this evening, I think that's a good thing and part of the democratic process. So I thank you for your contribution. It's been noted. I'm not going to make any immediate promises to you tonight about what this panel will do, but we've heard you.
We will continue to watch, and I'll come back if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Okay. We next have councillor William Sonnix, who wishes to speak. Thank you for giving up your evening.
It may be better if I just speak before the KPI bit.
Agreed. I'm looking down at my crib sheet now, and decisions taken under special urgency provisions. There are no such. I'm looking at item eight, Cabinet or Portfolio Holder decisions called in for review. There were none. Item nine, this was the item I mentioned earlier that might have been interpreted as an urgent one. It's a very serious matter, and I apologise for being a rookie chair in not informing panel members that this was something that I had discussed with one of the panel members. But in a nutshell, there has been a data breach, and a panel member, as you can see there, has requested that this panel looks at what's happened, the processes involved, how we can make sure it never happens again. I think that what's presented here is very sensible, but I would invite councillor Willits to offer a few words on it and why it's here, and then we'll open it up and see where the panel wants to go. Councillor Willits.
Thank you, Chairman. Unfortunately, I think some did not get the proposal as a matter of courtesy, although one can raise any of the new items at the meeting. I did circuit the note around, but it doesn't seem to have got to everyone, so I'll take a moment just to re-capitulate, Chairman. In fact, I'll read the note. You'll know that it was widely reported in the national press, the local press, and on the council's website, that personal data collected from our residents by the council for the purpose of end-of-year financial administration was entrusted to a contractor whose security standards fell considerably short of those which the Governance and Audit Committee mandate for the council's own processing systems. So I'm requesting that the security panel add a work item consisting of three parts. The first, as a matter of urgency, to review the process and procedures for letting contracts which entail contractors' handling and safeguarding personal information entrusted to us by our residents, and which we hand over to them to carry out their contractual litigation. Second point, to review the effectiveness of the council's process for due diligence inquiries into the security standards of contractors to be awarded contracts involving safeguarding personal data collection. I think it's not good enough just to assume that contractors have good standards in place. We should be reviewing the processes for due diligence to make certain that they do. And thirdly, to review the process procedures and timeframes for the City Council to contact all residents whose personal data was made publicly visible by security failures on the part of the council's contractors, informing relevant residents of their personal data that was inadvertently made public, and the process for the timely issue of apologies from the council for the failure to safeguard the residents' personal data. Clearly, it was not our failure, but it's a failure which we own, because it was a contractor to whom we had given the information. So I would suggest, Chairman, that we have a new work item on our programme when we come to consider it later on in the agenda, covering the three points shown on the paper for the reasons stated. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Willits. Does any other panel member wish to offer a view on this, or is the mood that this is a legitimate item and we should put on the work programme? And to be very clear, I mean, as you heard councillor Willits state there, you know, this is not something that we think has gone wrong internally, but we are liable because we have other contractual failing, which would seemingly be the case. But let's have that review, so we'll cover it later on. Looking at the clerk, and he's nodding, so that's good. Okay, great. Thank you, councillor Willits, for bringing that to our attention. Item 10, which is being presented this evening by Richard Block here, Chief Operating Officer, and Chisara over there. Chisara, maybe? Is that how, have I got you on?
Councillor Jay, Portfolio Holder.
Forgive me. Forgive me. It is my first meeting. I knew this would be like this. Okay. The portfolio holder is obviously presenting with the support from Richard Block here, and have I got Chisara right? I'm going to say that about 15 times in the course of the year, but my name's Darius, so I'm allowed to say that, because I've been doing it, responding all my life. Chisara?
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'm very sorry. To the esteemed portfolio holder, please do introduce item 10, Corporate Key Performance Indicator Targets, 23 to 24.
Okay. I'm asking the panel to consider supporting and agreeing the proposed corporate KPI targets for 23, 24. They in the main reflect revenue targets in the budget and the strategic plan already agreed. Initial benchmarking to similar authorities is being looked at for variance reports going forward, looking at improving both the speed of data and regular up-to-date and comparative information. Just looking at the KPIs themselves, the tax and business rates, collection rates are showing strong performance and better than others. Waste subscribers for new charges has been included for the first time, and the waste collection KPI is realistic, with the proposed waste review picking up improvement measures. I've run that past the portfolio holder and had his confirmation. KPIs for housing have been agreed again by the relevant portfolio holder, and the economic indicators reflect the ongoing strategic plan. If anybody's got any questions.
The leader of the council. It's not often that we have your company, and it's very welcomed. I see your hand.
Thank you, Chair. I love coming to scrutiny. I'm that sad. And governance and audit too, equally sad. I always look across here at councillor Willits, because we're amongst a few people in this room that can enjoy looking through things like KPIs. I know the new portfolio holder does as well, and Chisara has no choice. Just a couple of remarks that we'll make for context, really, because I think it's important before we get into the detail. First is just to remind ourselves that when we had an independent review by the LGA, they not only gave us good marks for how we collectively ran this place as best we could, they also made some significant recommendations which we followed through. First was that a strategic plan should be more tightly bound in time and in terms of delivery relationship, both in terms of the resources to deliver and thus targets, how you measure where we are. So that change is reflected here in both the number of indicators, the new indicators, and the relationship to strategic plan. Second thing is to say that performance is always an issue for debate about where you set that standard. What we've gone for this time, as I suggest always should, realism and practicality, alive to the fact that we can drive up individual performance on a target, but it has a cost and it has a consequence, and we know that we have significant pressures in this year. That said, my last point, this remains, both in terms of an approach, but also in terms of the targets themselves, aimed at the median or the upper quartile, to strong performance. I hope that when we come to you in a quarter's time, we'll be able to show a relationship between that good performance that the portfolio holder referred to, and we've got some examples with this if they're necessary, and the way that we are sort of setting out our store in terms of what we should do against the strategic plan and budget agreed by full council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. I'm looking around the room to see if anyone wants to offer contribution, but before I come to you, councillor Willits, I just want to offer my own, if that's all right. There is. Have your say. Let's have a have your say first, and then I'll offer my view, if that's all right. Thank you, councillor Sonnix.
I'm happy to do it whenever suitable, and welcome and to chairing the committee. I want to comment on the KPIs and how they relate to the strategy, and I want to say that later this year, we're going to be struggling with another budget round, and we'll hear how services have to be cut and all sorts of unpleasant things that have to be done. And that's the point at which we will, then the financial figures will pop up again, and we'll start talking about what actually constrains our activities. And the councils like this, every organisation, spends a lot of money preparing financial information, and they don't always use it very well. And you end up with a whole load of KPIs and other peripheral information that's not prepared in the same structured, disciplined way that you run yourselves by. We don't, we have all that financial information, we don't actually look at it, we haven't looked at last year's accounts, we haven't discussed them anywhere within the council. We have all that money spent, and we're not using it. So I think that's, you know, my first general point. Secondly, the strategic priorities, the top first strategic priority is climate change, and the KPIs we're given on that, I just feel, aren't very helpful, they're not very ambitious, and they're not very helpful. So if you look at the 100 tonnes of carbon we're hoping to save over the next year, that is 1% of 1% of the borough's total output, not just the council's. We always get confused about whether we're talking about the council or the borough, and I think that's something that should be clarified in the KPIs. But it's 1% of 1%, and that for your biggest first priority is an underwhelming target, I feel. And I think I'd rather see it as a cultural thing, that you close doors, you turn the heating down a little bit, you attend to your heating budget. Once again, we have a financial system, why don't we use it? And we put insulation into council buildings where we can, moderate practical steps, not overarching, grand-sounding political objectives that don't actually mean very much. Other detailed points on the KPIs. Yes, I've mentioned that we need to talk about the activities of the whole of Colchester, not just about the council. So we need to be clear, are we counting fly tipping incidents just on council land or on private land too, where landowners bear the clear-up costs? And are we wilding eight hectares of council land per annum, or does that include private land? And is that an annual figure or a cumulative one? Some of the targets, I think there needs to be a discussion about whether they're acceptable and what the causes of having to accept them are. Eight days of sick leave, an acceptable average, does that then become an entitlement? And why is it so much higher for us than the national average at 5.7? It's gone up nationally quite a bit, but we're way above that. I feel we should be discussing that, discussing staff morale, whether our extensive and wide-ranging strategy is causing low morale and overworked staff. I feel if we had a narrower, a more focused strategy, that we would perhaps get better Finally, we've got, I see we've got some revenue targets with pounds signs in front of them, so I'm delighted to see that coming in. But I think we really ought to be looking at the bottom line and then relating it through to what constrains us. And after a year of looking at the council's accounts and trying to understand them, it's our reserves, it's the impact on reserves, on our financial reserves, that is what stops us doing so many things. So we need to be looking at the bottom line on these things, not after allocated costs, the bottom line of controllable costs for the museums, for the leisure centre, and so on and so forth. So try and look at the bottom line, not just the top line, try and use the financial systems we have, not other side or jungle systems. As an accountant, I call them jungle systems. And try and bring the council really into focus on what will solve our problems.
Thank you, councillor Sonnix, for that contribution. Do stay seated in that hot seat. I'm just going to see if the portfolio holder has a quick view on the KPIs around council land versus private land, because I thought that was quite an interesting point and one that might be known here very easily.
Well, yeah, I'd agree. I mean, I think some of these need a bit more detail, probably. I'd agree, you know, looking at what we mean by the fly tipping, and I'd also agree on the, looking at the bottom line. I've actually already raised that this evening, that we need to look not just at whether we're growing or shrinking, but what impact that's having after expenses. So yes, I don't necessarily disagree.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to throw a lifeline here to the leader of the council, because notwithstanding there might be merit in what's just been said, I'm sure there is merit in what's just been said, around the carbon reduction targets, but let's see if I'm being helpful here. It is a priority of this authority, isn't it? It may not be the number one priority in a sequence, it's just been presented first. I don't know if you wanted to offer a view on that, because, you know, for example, I am, my number one priority is to make the most of Colchester's unique heritage and have millions of tourists here, but that might not necessarily appear on top of a list, it's just that it's a collection of priorities. Do you want to give us an insight into where your head's at with that?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you, William. Some of this deserves a thoughtfulness away from here, so can I just go back a bit and say what I usually say, at least once a year to scrutiny? And I say to you, William, several times a year, having a challenge is worth having. We'll look at the points that have been made, I'm with the portfolio holder, I think at least clarity of explanation, that's one of the learnings you always have on this, and it's a balance, isn't it, to be frank, between how much detail, how much data that we put forward to make this digestible and understandable or indigestible. The context, though, is always to say the process in which we work. So for me, targets to change and to be refined and changed during this course of the year is just an appropriate thing to do. I've been through this three times, and on the third time, my different views, William, to the ones I had at the beginning. So I expect some iteration on here, and we'll take that through to Cabinet and out the other side. Time to come back here in a quarter, we'll be in a better position, I think, to talk to them. To your point, Chair, absolutely. We have to make progress, and here I support this, because it reflects the strategic plan that we collectively agree, because we have a whole series of influences on the city and its environs, and we cannot just focus at one point and one point of direction. It's more than one issue, this is a broad, connected sweep reflecting a strategic plan, as I say, of some ambition. But I do take the point that any one individual major can deserve some challenge. There is a rich story, and actually, Richard's well placed to talk to it briefly, if he doesn't mind, around what we've done that has been, I think, exemplary in terms of trying to take carbon out of our system. Now, if the committee need that, we can do that. This is about setting out against, you know, against the backdrop described, those things that we can measure in the year ahead. There's a lot being done, and we're perhaps suggesting less than actually is at work in that play already.
I invite you to respond to anything you've heard before you return to your seat.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I don't want to say much, except that it's the diversity of targets that we're aiming at, that I think... aiming at, that I think is at the root of our financial struggles. And I think there's a clear blue water between the line that I'm trying to encourage Conservative groups to take, which is we need to focus on, and we need to understand our constraints. It's no good writing a strategy, which is a wish list of what, what we want to do, we have to recognise the constraints that we have, the financial constraints we have, and we have to understand them. And it's not at all clear from the reporting that we have, we have lots and lots of statistics, and they're all very nice, but we don't get down to the root of what constrains our activities. So why shouldn't we, for example, trying to build 380 houses, or trying to add 380 houses to our social housing over the next few years? Great idea, why don't we double it? What's constraining us from doing that? Does anyone understand? Has anyone looked at it? What's the impact of interest rates increasing? We've got a capital programme review, has anyone looked at that? Who's, you know, and it just goes on and on and on. We have to have more focus if we're to solve the financial problems of the council. And come the end of this year, we will be challenged, as the opposition will be challenged to, say, what we would cut, instead of charging for garden waste or something like that. And the reply will come, I'll tell you now, that we've, we're shooting at too many different things.
Councillor Sunnix, thank you for your contribution, which has been duly noted and heard, and I see the leader of the council.
William, we're going to have to go off and have another dark room and conversation, if we can. I welcome the challenges, as I say, if you can make them specific, and I heard some tonight, then those become questions which we, at the administration of the day, and officers for any member of any party can do, will do their very best to answer. Now, we have a programme that's wide, we have a strategic plan that has breadth and depth, because that's the kind of place that we are, that's a reflection of the breadth of responsibilities we have. We can give you more information, if that's a help, we can tell you where money is spent, I believe we do do that. We do have two committees specifically that look at this, Governance and Order and scrutiny, through the course of the whole of the year. So I, I think I would put the challenge back to you, Chair, if I might, and we might also pass this on to colleagues in Governance and Order. If there is a genuine, deep rooted cross party, or more than a member with respect view, that there is information that you need to judge better how the council's performing, then of course we'll do our very best, while still delivering, to give you insights into the challenges you think you see, or the concerns that you have. I don't share your view. I believe that we've got the balance, we've got a very difficult year, which we've got to make a lot of change, we know that. That's the budget we collectively challenged, walked through and agreed, that's the strategic plan that we agreed last year, the last municipal year as well. Our job is to deliver it for us all and to set the challenge, but you have to be, have to give us more of an indicator of where you want to take that conversation, offline or open, but we need to hear it. Otherwise, we will continue to follow the standard reporting practice that has worked well enough for us in past years, which you both know well.
Thank you, councillor King. Okay, thank you very much, councillor Sunnix, for keeping the hot seat hot. And I just want to offer my take on this before I open up to members, and I've seen councillor Willis with his large hand in the air. So in looking, in looking at the KPIs, and without getting into the specifics really, I just wonder whether there could be a case for some more contextual reference points? So for example, we, we know, we can find out what the average council tax collection rates are, probably across England and Wales, probably quite easily. You know, and, and looking down at the staff absenteeism rate, which obviously is not, is not a great figure to see, but actually, I've got no reference point. I don't know where we're at in terms of other local authorities. We've heard this evening from councillor Sunnix, and I know that, that his statistic to be true, that perhaps in the private sector, the figure is lower, but if, if local authorities, in particular that run a lot of in-house services, as we do, have got that kind of number, then I would take a little more comfort in knowing that we're not wildly off the national average. So I, I don't know whether it's in the narration, and I do think that with, with some of them, it might be a case that there's almost like an additional column, where we can get that data. I don't know if there's a view on that amongst the portfolio holder and the support team.
Yeah, I do want to take this, all right. I'm quite happy to say that, yes, comparatives is what I was talking about in context, and we're aware, we've got some, so some, but some of the data comes to us very slowly and very late, that's half the problem. I asked for some on residual waste, we're looking at figures from 21, 22, I'd like to see that sort of better and improved, but certainly from my point of view, I'm an ideal with KPIs on a daily basis, my usual work, I'd like to see KPIs used properly, which has been, and informed decisions, and make sure that we've got the right background for them, and we're getting there, the data's, the data is available, yeah.
Thank you, that's a reassuring response, and I'm sure the Local Government Association would be really happy to help us in this, because that data in some of these fields will exist. Okay, I've talked too much, I saw councillor Willis first, and then I see councillor McCarthy. Councillor Willis?
Thank you, Chairman. Of course, we're talking about the, the metrics for the, the new council strategy. Now, I didn't vote for it, as my Conservative colleagues did not vote for it, but nevertheless, Chairman, I just love KPIs, because they enable us to, despite what William was saying, to navigate through the, the performance barriers of the council. So although I'm not wholly in favour of the structure plan, I'm going to be really in favour of the, the corporate key performance indicators, and do my best to ensure that they do work. Now, Chairman, this is a new plan, and what we have here is the proposal for the KPIs, which best tees out how we are doing with the new strategic plan. Therefore, it's really important that we get it right straight away. Now, there's lots of other data which will go behind many of these, these KPIs, but what I see as really important this evening is that we agree, well, Cabinet agrees, but we, we give them a nod, that these are the KPIs which are really going to prove whether the strategy is working, and that the values being put in initially are reasonable values, and they are not going to warp our judgement on what performance we may see in the future. So with those thoughts in mind, and trying to get clarity in the direction we're going on KPIs, I'll just run through those where I have concerns. And it's always good to start off with the first KPI, council tax collected, where we see that the current rate of collection is 97.8, but the proposed target is 97.6. Now, we're talking about a total collection of council tax of some £11 million, so 0.2% isn't all that much, it's only £20,000 or so, but there is a principle here. And I think if we're going to adopt any KPI which suggests the performance is going to be less than it is at the moment, or was prior to Covid, then there needs to be a good explanation. And to have any KPI which is reducing the collection target without justifying it, I think is a poor starting point. So certainly, with this and many other of the KPIs here, to go backwards is not acceptable, unless there are extreme reasons which the portfolio holder or leader can bring to our attention. Now, I know in the case of collection of, of council tax, the, the first 1% is extremely cheap to collect, and as one gets towards the end of the tail, it becomes more and more expensive, and you get to the point where it's costing you more to collect the council tax than the money you're actually getting in. So there's some sensible decisions to be made around here. But, but nevertheless, the principle to accept going backwards is not really acceptable to me. The same logic applies to the bottom of page 41.
Councillor, sorry to interrupt there. The leader has suggested that he responds one by one to your points, otherwise we might lose something. Would you, would you welcome that, or would you want to do it on block at the end?
Well, I've got about 10 points on which to answer, so perhaps it might be better if we do them one by one.
And, and the leader is indicating that he's happy to respond to some of the points, probably that fall into the remit of councillor Corey, who isn't here this evening, if that's, if that's okay.
We're doing, we're doing it as a tag team, so perhaps we take it in turns. On this first one, I mean, the points, point principles is a fair one, but if, if one looks at this, what this is, is actually an increase. So this more challenge in the target we set, you're right, it's a fraction below the performance was achieved. The context is back to the point I made earlier, which is we have to be real about the judgements that we make. We know, don't we, the pressures that are on the population, the working population, we'll have to meet these bills, but coming at them from every single angle. I'm sure that members of the panel have looked at disposable discretionary income, under inflationary pressure, and the difference between pay rises as, for the whole of the population, and the increase in inflation. So this is a marginal, a marginal caution, as I understand it, makes sense to me, that goes somewhere between the two points of reference, the target set last year, the fact we did exceptionally well, and actually, and we need to share this with you, we will as fast as we can, much better than the average of other local authorities, yeah? Doing much better. So this is, this is how we had to test our ambitions, for us collectively to share that with you. But to go higher and be more demanding than we were last year, but a bit underneath the actual performance, I think it's a very small position.
Chairman, we, I accept that there is a cost of living crisis, but we have a very generous local council tax support system, which ensures that those people who aren't able to pay their council tax have in the main the fallback to the council support system. So I don't accept that just because we have cost of living problems, that that is a good excuse for people not to pay their, their council tax. And I accept what the leader says, it's a small amount, but it's the principle that we're, we're, we're thinking of going backwards rather than, than forwards. And the same applies to the HRA rent collected, where again, we're marginally going backwards. My next point, Chairman, is on the leisure centre income, and it's just a philosophical point. The KPI is the leisure centre income, but the things which I am particularly interested about are the profitability of the leisure centre. So it may well be that the income is 6.5 million, and I'm not sure how that's increased in regard to the last year, but what I think as councillors, we're really interested in is the profitability. In other words, is the centre, is the losses or the profit involved in running the leisure centre going up or down? And the, to state that a performance target based purely on income is only half the issue if we're monitoring the performance of leisure within the strategic plan. Pause at that point.
We, we agree.
Thank you, yes, absolutely. I will be speaking with Adam Britton next week, and I will be asking that very same question, actually, so thank you for bringing that up.
My next point is on the capital programme, where I just could not understand, this is the, the last item in, on page 42 in the first block, the capital programme, 80% of forecast again spend in the current financial year. Does that mean the target is to spend 80% of what we have set in the capital programme? Then when we read into the next column, it says the target for 2023, 24 has been set at 70% of the spend to have matching the forecast. I don't really follow, are we talking about 80% or 70%, or do the 80 and the 70 refer to different, slightly different issues of measurement of the performance of the capital programme? So I just couldn't understand what basis of this KPI is. It's good that we have a target to measure how well we're doing on the capital programme, but the dialogue doesn't help me at all.
Thank you, it's, it's an error, as I understand this, it should read 80%.
80%, yes.
And it's relative to spend, and this is in the context, you'll understand, which is that we have struggled for a variety of reasons to hit the rates of spend in year. Now, I, I'll hand to, perhaps Allison's got a view on this, but I would start by saying this, because I really welcome the conversation, right? We'll take this away, and this is a work in progress, there's a new strategic plan, or reset strategic plan with reset indicators, and we'll do some learning from this good conversation. I have given challenge to county colleagues, for example, only a couple of weeks ago, on this kind of forecasting, which doesn't tell you what you're getting for your money. It really, earned value is a complicated thing for anybody who's done this in project management terms, but, you know, by £100, £100 worth of stuff, now, you're spending the money but not getting what it is you want. So there's a richer conversation for us to look at, it's aligned to what you can measure, and I think we should take, we should also have a look at that. At the moment, this is an indicator of a determination to manage capital better and to drive up the rates of spend in year.
Thank you for that clarity. My next point, Chairman, is the first one on the bottom of page 42, strategic plan response to climate emergency. Now, climate emergency is one of the issues which is very dear to my heart, Chairman. And I notice that we are proposing to relax the standard on residual household waste collection. Now, this has been one of the mantras that we've always been trying to reduce people, reduce the amount people put in their black bags, we've tried to persuade them to compost, to, to segregate, to put their food waste separately, and it has been one of the, one of the main programmes for the, the last few years, to drive down the amount that's going into the, the black bags. So here we have a proposal that we go up from the previous target of 346 to 354, allowing another 10 so kilos to go into the, or expecting an extra 10 kilos to go into the, the black bags. Now, I just don't find this acceptable at all as a starting position for the plan. Now, there may be mitigating circumstances, I know, with the introduction of, of charging for garden waste, the excess space in black bags is just going to be filled up with, with garden waste, which should be going through an entirely different route to be recycled. Clearly, we don't have the background here, but I must say, it is so disappointing to see one of our main thrusts of the past on, on saving the environment to start being, being reduced. And we must have a clear explanation of why it is we're, we're expecting people to put more in their black bags over the forthcoming year.
Now, I mean, I've questioned these figures myself, and as you say, there are mitigating factors. Some of it is that we're, as David was saying earlier, trying to be a bit more realistic about the target in line with what we're actually achieving at the moment. It does need a big behaviour change, we're working towards that, as I said earlier. This has been set as a target, but with a view, with the waste strategy review, that they'll come up with some improvements that will mean that this figure, year on year, can be looked at again and changed. But I think we've got to be realistic about where we are at the moment, at the current time, and setting a target that we'll never achieve just doesn't seem to be realistic to me.
Councillor Willis?
Well, perhaps it's the skill of the administration to ensure that we do do these. Now, the next one makes me quite furious, Chairman. When I was first elected to this authority, Colchester was bottom of the county's recycling table, and over the course of the, the next 10 years or so, and credit to my colleague, the leader of the council and his friends, who, whose sterling work has managed to move us up from bottom of the recycling table to the middle of the recycling table, in fact, maybe just over the middle, let me not underestimate the performance, but we're now in the middle of the table. And disappointingly, we see that the target for household waste used, recycled and composted is going to come down from 55 to 53. Only a small increase, I mean, it's, it's only 2%, only 2%. But what annoys me again, Chairman, is that we're setting a target which is in the downward trajectory after 10 years of slowly increasing the amount due to hearts and minds campaigns to all the people, occasionally the big stick, but in the main, persuading people to do more on household waste, recycling and composting. And here we're setting a target which is going in the other direction. I just think it's giving the wrong impression to everyone, Chairman.
Councillor King?
This is more demanding than the actuals, that's the answer. So he's actually asking more of people than before. So he's actually asking more of people than before.
Okay, next, on to the top of page forty-three, fly tipping incidents. There's some strange weasel wording here, that the new indicator, which measures the number of fly tipping incidents reported and cleared. Does that mean if a fly tipping is not cleared, it won't be in the statistics? The statistic will only cover those incidents which are reported and cleared.
Shall I respond to that? After consulting with the service, yes, that's right. After we consulted with the service, getting this target from the neighbourhood services, yes, that's right. We record, we measure the performance against the ones that have been reported and cleared.
That is not really a measure of fly tipping incident. It's an incident whether or not it's cleared.
I can take that back to the service and discuss.
Sorry, my understanding of the K P I is if we just measure fly tipping incidents, that isn't a measure of the council's performance. It's actually clearing the fly tips that is the performance indicator. Because it's all very well having large numbers of fly tips, but if we don't clear them as a council, that's not good performance as well. So it's kind of a double metric. Number of fly tipping incidents shows you how many. And then the fact that they're cleared shows you the council's performance in actually removing them. So it's a double metric.
And how therefore, Chairman, do we deal with those? How do we get a feel, a grasp, a report of the number of fly tipping incidents which have not been cleared, which also is a measure of the council's non-performance as opposed to performance?
You take one or the other from the two numbers.
Yeah, I'm okay on the maths. What I want to know is how, or the arithmetic rather. I want to know how it is going to be reported? How will we be aware under the K P I regime of how many fly tipping incidents have not been cleared?
We might be talking across purposes and we'll take the blame for that, Dennis. But we intend to be clear. And I think, you know, there is some learning about how these things are set out. Thank you again for the remarks. So we will be counting how many times fly tipping is reported. We will be counting how many times it's been cleared. We will have a comparison between the two numbers and proportions. That will give us a very clear, rolling sense of progress and achievement.
Good, thank you. My final question on this particular group, the environment, is on achieving the pathway to net zero targets. We're proposing to reduce our emissions from five thousand two hundred tonnes at the beginning of the year to five thousand one hundred tonnes of C O two equivalent. That is a reduction of one point nine percent, if my calculator was working correctly. Call it two percent for the ease of calculation, Chairman. So if each year we reduce our carbon emissions by two percent, it will take us some fifty years to clear it off. Whereas we've got to do it by about twenty thirty. We can't reach the twenty thirty target by reducing our carbon emissions by only two percent a year. So there seems to be a major disconnect there between the date and the amount we are reducing. I mean, perhaps this is just the start of the programme and somewhere there is a graph that shows we're going to have a massive acceleration in reducing the council's carbon reductions. But what is stated here does not seem a particularly challenging objective.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Willetts. Obviously, there has been considerable progress in terms of reducing carbon, as was explained earlier by the leader of the council already. It's not a straight line in terms of the overall reduction. If you look at the carbon reduction plans and we've had extensive work carried out by the Carbon Trust around this, that the Environment and Sustainability Panel are having great focus on. The greater carbon savings are actually achieved in the latter period of the net zero target years due to a range of factors, including our fleet replacement programme when we moved to a greater number of electrical vehicles as well as decarbonisation of the electrical grid network. So I think it's not a flat line. It effectively exponentially increases our carbon reductions in later years, which explains why the target is not as simple as just multiplying it each year by the same amount.
I accept that, therefore, Chairman, that the target for this year is not atypical or typical of the programme. And that will need explaining in much greater detail, otherwise we will appear to be going at a speed which is not acceptable to most of our residents who are mindful of the dangers of carbon. If I can move on to the strategic plan, improve health, wellbeing and happiness theme. Time to process housing benefit and local council tax support claims. Here it says that at the moment, we're doing both of those in two days average. And the target is for four days and five days respectively in the forthcoming year. If we've achieved a performance time of two days this year, why do we have to go to four days and five days in the forthcoming year?
I think this is a target we discuss pretty much every year in terms of the exceptional levels of performance by the service, regardless of the K P I. I would just refer back to councillor King's point around the fact that, you know, it is going to be a difficult year. We do have financial pressures, which means that there may well be more demand on those particular services, which will make achieving the same levels of performance as previous years increasingly taxing. But I know Sam Preston, who's the manager concerned for that service, will strive to, regardless of targets, achieve the exceptional performance he has previously.
Okay. Then the next one I have a comment on is sickness rate in working days. This is a longstanding problem. It's hardly changed since I was first appointed, elected to the council. I think it was about five or six, ten years ago. Now seven verging on eight, which, as we were reminded by councillor Sunnix earlier on, is substantially greater in a percentage than the private sector. Also, of course, many of our people are now working at home. And what happens if someone is sick while they're working at home? Does that actually get recorded as sick? Or is it just swings and roundabouts, the work gets done at some other time? So I don't know what percentage of the staff we are measuring. Clearly, the driver of a refuse freighter, if he doesn't turn up because he is sick, we know about it, but there must be many members of staff who are now having the odd day ill and we don't really know because they don't report it. So is there some clarity about who we are measuring sickness rate for and how it's being done?
Before we get an indication of a response, I saw councillor McCarthy on that very specific line.
Yeah, if I may, thank you. Obviously, Dennis has got some more points to make and my point was on this. Not to point fingers, but if I recall, I think it was a scrutiny a few years ago, certainly during Covid, the main issue was in neighbourhood services. Whether or not that is still the case, I don't know how we change this K P I without, again, pointing fingers at a particular area. But it seems to be if that is still the case, we need to have a separate K P I for them, I think. And again, I don't quite buy into the long-term sickness due to Covid in twenty-three, twenty-four. And I'm not, you know, we've got to look at is there habits, is it morale? What is the cause of this? And if it is particularly that department, then they need to be two separate K P Is altogether. That was only the point I was going to make. Thank you.
I think I'm detecting from body language that that's a really, really exceptional point about breaking that K P I down.
Thank you, Chair. So just to clarify, because this is something we manage and monitor really closely and you are absolutely spot on. Actually, a large proportion of the council, except neighbourhood services, is achieving way beyond this target, round around five days. Neighbourhood services isn't and it skews the target out. I will say, one of the biggest issues is the rigor that we put our crews through, the way that we actually collect our waste. And we've got a waste strategy and I just hope that as part of the considerations of that, we think about the health and welfare of our people. Because until we do, I really can't see the target improving massively while we're asking crews to lift exceptionally heavy bags of rubbish as part of their job.
If I may just intervene in this point, I mean, this is the kind of detail that really makes the, you know, the narrative behind these figures really important to understand, aren't they? Because, you know, not every local authority collects waste in the way that we collect it. And if we are hearing and feeling that, you know, the manual labour, am I allowed to say manual labour? I don't know if I am anymore. But the labour, the heavy lifting of bags in very hot weathers is going to take its toll as opposed to putting a wheelie bin on the back of a truck. So I think, you know, it's a really good conversation to be having, everyone.
At that point, so recently, looking at garden waste, which should be a real subject of conversation, might it in the months ahead? There's a very significant difference between the crews with the rest of the workforce and then those who have to hump bags around and those are on the wheelie bin round. So it's absolutely true. I think what this conversation demonstrates, though, on some issues, even if we did have and we will have a richer set of background notes and comparative tables, that's the next steps that Allison and the team will extract. Some of these things are really quite complicated. So my suggestion would be either you have this on your forward programme or that you just ask and we can do this. I pay periodically real close attention to this because the availability of the workforce, while they're not there, the whole conversation, we touched on councillor Sunnix and members here. Now, I absolutely accept and so do the officers, you know. Because our people want to work, love their work, preferably, turn up and do well. In the round, they do. And so thank you, Richard, for pulling out some of the facts that will help give some ease. But we could provide a short note on this, how it's handled, how it's addressed. When I looked at it last, all I can say is it was being worked at in the way that I would expect a professional organisation to do. But perhaps we could share some of that.
Thank you, councillor King. Before I go back to councillor Willetts, I know he's got a couple more points to make. I see councillor Smalls.
Yeah, I just wanted to just support those comments. I'm proud to be a manual worker, Darius. So that's absolutely fine to say that. And obviously, there is a difference with sickness. So I'm a, people might know I'm a postal worker, so it's, you know, clearly the sickness is different if you're in a manual job.
Thank you. Councillor Willetts, your final point.
Yes, tenth point. And it is the flakiest one on the order paper. And that is the last one, social value in procurement. And really, I don't understand what this K P I is all about and how we're going to measure it. And if I can just explain the context, what we ask contractors to do, we want them to do a job of work. And we say, if we give you the contract, you've got to do something else for us. Like, we'd like you to paint the town hall doors, please quote for that. And if you were to paint the fence at the bottom of the road as well, as a sort of a social contribution, you might get the contract over someone else who wasn't prepared to paint the fence. So contracts end up in two parts. The cost of doing the job which the council wants plus an extra bit which is providing the social value. Because from the point of view of the provider of the service, you know, they've got to pay their people not only to do the main contract, but they've got to pay their people to do the social value, which is not really part of the contract. So the contractor knows how much the real work costs and the social value is. We probably don't unless we ask and there was some reluctance to ask them. So I don't see how we are going to tease out what is the social value, what it's worth, and whether we would be better off as a council just asking for two contracts, paint the council front doors and give me a separate price for painting the railings around the kiddie nursery or whatever the social value in procurement is going to be. I know the idea of persuading contractors to do something extra and give social value back when they get a council contract is a popular topic. But I just don't see that this K P I, as it's phrased, is going to allow us to judge whether the actor's value and his time is being well used and whether we are, bearing in mind that the cost of contracts go up if the social value is added in without telling us whether we are actually getting good value. So I would certainly like an explanation of just how this K P I is going to measure anything and display to us that we are getting better value by asking people to do additional social obligations in order to get a council contract, rather than just asking them to bid for the price of all the work at the lowest cost and us deciding who is the best person to paint the doors and paint the fence around the kiddie nursery.
Thank you, councillor Willetts. Does anyone wish to come in on that one?
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify in terms of social value, the examples that you gave, councillor Willetts. There are some other examples which are kind of non-added costs, so local, you know, number of staff locally employed by a company to ensure money stays within the local culture economy. Apprenticeships as part of that workforce, so giving young people locally jobs within those companies that work on council contracts. There's actually a whole raft of indicators that are kind of added costs, kind of how you manage a business to operate more locally, ethically, to keep money within the local economy. And we can actually select the social value indicators on every contract that we look for. And I have to say, we do focus on those, very much so. But if the panel wanted a greater understanding of social value in procurement, I'm sure, again, we could add something or maybe do a member briefing.
Best seen, Chairs, quality measures rather than cost-adding measures, that's how I will put it. They help you judge council decision on procurement. And certainly when I last looked at them, they weren't there to make it more difficult to buy for all the reasons you imply. It's not what we actually want, we want good value. And I see it in that context, but perhaps we could do, as suggested, give an explanation rather than have the conversation.
You're happy, councillor Willetts. Okay, right, this has been a very good discussion. We're twenty minutes away from a break point, but I'm aware that many people probably want to have some words of wisdom. Where are we at right now? So I think what I'm feeling is that people are generally encouraged by the K P Is, but that we need to see some more detail. I think where we're probably wrestling at the moment, or where councillor Willetts and some others might be wrestling with, is this whole actuals at the moment versus the K P I. And I get the point that we are seeking to make improvements on the previous year's K P I. But actually, at the moment, if we are already overperforming, I can see the legitimate point that councillor Willetts is making about seeking to step up, if you like. I think that's a fair point that's been very well made. But let's go around the room and hear the contributions, because I'm sure there are other views. Councillor McCarthy, did you cover off the point you wanted to? Great. Okay, I saw councillor Rowe, I think that was going back to, way, way back to black, bad, residual waste and probably some other points. So the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Yeah, so it was, I probably should have cut in earlier around. It doesn't matter. So my point is around recycling, around the recycling targets that we have. I mean, it seems to me that the council has agreed, at least voted on the fact that there is a climate emergency. Recycling targets are probably quite high on that point of making sure that we, you know, do our bit for the environment. My concern is that the recycling targets we have always bump around in the low fifties percent. My concern is that the recycling targets we have always bump around in the low 50s percents. I would like to sort of, you know, work across the council to understand what exactly do we need to do? What do we need to do in order to sort of push that into the 60s, the 70s? I mean, if you talk to people in, yeah, if you talk to people in the private sector, they get the recycling rates up to in the 90s, into the high 90 percents. And sort of bringing it back to effectively what councillor Suncs was saying as well. Would it be worthwhile if we had some stretch targets? If we decided, what did the council decide is important? I believe that waste and recycling would be one of those points. We could have a stretch target of say 60%. And then at least at the end of the year, we could have a decision and a viewpoint, which we probably will agree with, as to why we couldn't reach 60%. And that's not necessarily a failure of the council, that's just an us understanding as to what we need to do in the future to get to 60%. What's it going to cost and how are we going to get there? And then hopefully, across the council, we can come to some sort of agreement, as a sort of long term plan, as to how we can actually deliver that. And I think that that's super important from our perspective. And I'd really like to understand that in greater detail, rather than just bumping around the sort of the low 50s and hoping that some residents, you know, recycle a bit more this year and we get from 52 to 53 or 50 to 51 or something. So thank you.
Councillor King.
Well, to start us off, I asked Richard if he's got to be your colleagues, because you're absolutely right. What lies ahead of us, what we know of government policy and declared intention. Although we are doing, to sort of gently say, a lot better than most, right? We're quite a long way off what I could see of national data. While I was Googling away today, great God was telling me things which looked quite encouraging. But we are a long way off where we want to be as, we need to be as a nation. Now, the garden waste strategy would be the right place to draw out what steps you have to take, transformational steps, to get the rates to where the government are suggesting they should go. And if they take the path that they say they'll be baking them binding, that'll be interesting, won't it? So perhaps Richard, you might talk to me.
Yeah, and councillor Rowe, if there's any possible, if you're interested of you getting involved in the waste strategy, absolutely that's the place where these conversations are happening and are going to be happening over the coming months, culminating in a new strategy in the new calendar year. I'd just emphasise the point that councillor King made. So you can kind of, you can make incremental small changes and you'll only edge the target by small amounts. You need to really have a paradigm shift in how you do things to be able to have a significant impact on that overall target. That's the only thing I'd say.
May chair, there is something else as well, which of course is the investment piece. So in the way of how government works in the modern world is, sets us all targets, has a conversation after the target's been set about what's needed to help us deliver it. I mean, that process is partly started and that's what lies ahead of us as well. It'd be great if you're into this, if you could have suggested, offered yourself, it'd be wonderful.
Yeah, I thank you very much for your reply. I mean, I appreciate the points you're making. It's just, as I said, I think it would be good if we could have a stretch target to say, how do we get to 60%, how do we get to 70%, what's it going to cost? And what do we need to do, who do we need to involve? Because I'm assuming that some of these things are, as you rightly pointed out, are beyond just the control of Culture Council and would require, you know, discussions with Essex County Council, discussions with government, well, you know, let's work out what that is and decide where we want to go with that.
I think that language can be adopted and perhaps you might want to, Chair, your call, remind us when we meet at Cabinet. But we're absolutely up for this. We know where, as I say, the direction and heading is. We haven't got the means to get there yet, we're further ahead than many. We've got an awful long way to go and this is going to be a really significant investment, conversations which affect everybody, businesses and householders, certainly affect the council. Won't be quick or easy to do, but no, it's the right challenge, a welcome, thank you.
Okay, I think what we are hearing tonight is ambition, you know? We want to keep pushing forward and go down that Kaizen approach of continuous improvement. Do I see anyone else that wants to make a contribution? I see councillor Arnold.
I absolutely love KPIs. What I'd like to know is how we are performing against other councils. Because setting KPIs without comparison to other performance, it doesn't mean anything to me. I can't see how we're doing compared to Tendrinh or Chelmsford or comparable councils. So I know some of these won't possibly, you'd be able to get the figures, but where they are, can we have those included so we can see how well we are doing?
I can say that we're working towards that. I've already got some figures here. So taking the waste that we were looking at earlier, if you look at a group of 15 authorities, what you've got to be very careful about is making sure that you're comparing light with light, not apples and pears in terms of how we're set up compared with other authorities. Our percentage of house sale waste sent for recycling, 21/22, was 51.48%. The mean average for 15 similar authorities was 40.02. So I'm on board with stretching the target, but we're actually way above what others are achieving already. So we're doing good work. That data is there, it's just a matter of pulling it in to the narrative. And I, you know, I take on board what's been said tonight about we need more detail in here so that people understand where the figures have come from. We've already gone some way to doing that. We've put some extra figures in and we need to, I agree, look at comparatives and look at regular reporting so that we know month on month, quarter on quarter, how we're performing against all of these. Oh yeah, the percentage of council tax not collected, again, this is 21/22. And one of the problems we have is the lag in the data that we get. But the percentage not collected for Culture still was 2.08%. And the mean average for 15 similar authorities was 2.91%. So again, we're performing better, the average across those 15 comparative authorities.
Councillor Rowe.
Just a point on the comparison with the other councils. If we're going to compare ourselves with any councils, I think we should always be comparing ourselves with the top councils, not sort of just the councils that are around us. We should be looking at the top three, five, 10, something like that and deciding that's where we want to be.
I would say the problem with doing that is you've got to make sure, for example, with council tax collection, that you're looking at authorities that have a similar housing base. So those that have more that are paying lower rates of tax are obviously going to get different collection rates to those. So you want a councillor, the council that represents pretty much the setup that we've got. So that's what we need to be careful about, is that we're not just giving ourselves a comparison against something that is totally different.
Yeah, that's fine, but incomparable councils, whoever the best is, we should be benchmarking ourselves against those. Thank you.
Okay, right, we've had a really, really good discussion on this. And can I thank three cabinet members for coming this evening? Chisara, who I think, one of your early introductions to, or certainly the first time we've met over the committee room, so thank you for your attendance and contribution and work here. This is going to be evolving. I think councillor Willis, given that you had the bulk of the specifics there, are you minded to make any recommendations formally? Or are you wishing to sum up where you're at in terms of where you think the room is at and what's been heard and received? Certainly it's been acknowledged over here that more detail should be available. Breaking down some of the KPIs over here, I heard. Recognising that actually, probably the turnover figure is not really that significant, it's profit we're interested in. And so thank you, because I saw the nods to that one. On the basis of that councillor Willis, I'm going to give you the floor for a second.
I had too much already, so. I think we should as a scrutiny panel express a view, having spent so much time on it. And certainly the sort of view I had in mind is that we note that the council has a policy of continuous improvement in its services and that we have an expectation that the KPI targets will be in an upward direction unless there are exceptional circumstances to justify it. Therefore, we welcome the proposed range of targets. We see them as a reasonable way of measuring progress on the new strategic plan. With the exceptional last one. And that we commend them to Cabinet.
Thank you for that. Owen, did you manage to get all of that? Because it was very, very good, very clear. The spirit of it, I think we all understand. And I'm not seeing anyone eyeballing me or throwing things at me. So I think councillor Willis' summation there is a fair one. And I'm happy to move on if everyone else is happy to move on on that basis. Well, thank you very much everyone, excellent stuff. Okay, right. We're moving on to item 11, work practice. Does anyone need to leave that we should like to leave now? Because I'm quite happy to let that happen. No, you do. And I know you've got another engagement. I know you double booked your diary this evening and you've already missed most of it. I hope they've saved you a cup of tea or a glass of something refreshing. Thank you very much councillor King. Thank you Chisara. Thank you councillor Jay. We really have been spoilt with three portfolio holders this evening. And my apologies for my performance. It will get better because I am continuously improving as well. Okay, we will go to item 11, the work programme. The dates of which of the future meetings have been circulated. And I in fact updated my own personal Google diary today to include not just the dates of those, but the briefings that happen a week before. So for the benefit of the new panel members here, there are briefings a week before any scrutiny session. As I said to you already this evening, I will run a fair and inclusive approach to this. But ultimately, we need to be firm, this is a rigorous, in fact, the most important committee in the council, keeping them all on their toes with what the executive does. So we have a very, very important role here. Owen, work programme, obviously there's some perennial items on there. And actually, I think it's fair to say that, you know, there is latitude, there's flexibility. So if events happen during the year, then we can make space for that. It might be that something crops up and we think that there's some synergy with an area that's already been pencilled to talk about. So we can bring that organisation or that person in as well. I'm going to hand over to Owen, who's going to give us a brief of what's coming up and how we can look forward with excitement to our Tuesday evenings.
Thank you Mr Chairman. I don't know if I could make this exciting, but I'll do my best. First, I just wanted to highlight that under section five of the work programme, we've currently got strategic plan references that refer to the last strategic plan. But those will be updated now that we're getting through the process of sorting out that new strategic plan. So in case any eagle-eyed of you had spotted that. Right, yes, I just wanted to echo your words, Mr Chairman, that yes, the work programme as it currently stands has the usual items that come to the scrutiny panel each year. And it's for the panel to populate those meetings with additional items as they come up as our issues are raised as being relevant through the year. And I know, Mr Chairman, we've discussed the benefits from leaving, flexing the system to address things as they come up, rather than either having to schedule many meetings, extra meetings, or really, you know, leading to very long meetings, which is obviously very difficult for members to then properly consider things if there's a lot on agendas. So I just wanted to invite members, if there are issues that come up that you would like to bring forward, please do let us know. And then we can bring them to meetings to add on to work programme as we go. I've kept in the portfolio holder briefings, which we've had in past years. We've tried to get all portfolio holders to come in and give a briefing on their portfolios during the year. And I'm very, very aware that we missed out on councillor Gosse last year, who was due. But unfortunately, yes, we're scheduling issues, he wasn't able to make it as there was a bit of a miscommunication and I will take responsibility for that. So we're looking to get him in, pretty much as the first one that we can get in. I've not scheduled any between this meeting and the third of, up to the 3rd of October, which is where we've got the first person in. Now, we have done that in past years because we felt that with new cabinet members coming in, the panels in past years have felt it was fair to let them get their feet under the table and get to grips before we asked them to come and brief. But with the portfolio holder for briefing pencilled in for the 3rd of October, it's the first one, alongside a review of CBH performance. Now, that can change because, Mr Chairman, I know there's been some discussion about whether or not CBH would be something that needs to come to scrutiny panel to give an update. Because obviously, as a wholly owned company of the council, governance and audit actually have a formal role in overseeing their performance. And I know certain members have discussed whether or not, yeah, sorry. Whether or not, so panel might want to talk about whether or not you'd like scrutiny panel to stay on the work programme. And if you didn't, then we could rejig that and have, see if councillor Gosse could come. Yeah.
Councillor McCarthy. The only thing, the last two or three years, I've been on both panels and it's identical. You get the same report twice. So I think governance and audit are more than capable of. Unless obviously the rest of the group wants to have it on the work programme. I think governance and audit are more suited for it and they do a good job.
I'm content with that explanation, looking at eyes, and I think that might be the feeling. Can I, just for the benefit of all really, and I'm thinking out loud, in terms of when we all go away and we do our homework, you know, we have some of these perennial attendees. So for example, the crime and disorder panel delegates that come here to speak to us, you know, very, very senior people in Essex Police who give up their time to explain how they're keeping us all safe out there. And similarly with the arts organisations, and I'll come on to that one separately. Sometimes there is a habit that we invite them in and we kind of let them sort of present to us and then we ask them some questions. And I just wonder actually if that, going forward, that, you know, there is a case in some of these guests that if there are burning issues in advance, that we actually get that through you, you the clerk maybe, democratic services, to let them know that, you know, rather than just sort of bringing your PowerPoint along, actually, whilst we're obviously going to love all of that, it might be that there was one particular aspect of that that actually we want to drill into and learn a bit more about. And actually, if they present that, then we won't be asking questions on the night that they might not even be prepared for in such depth. So as a chair and as deputy chair here, I think the culture will be that, you know, we really are keen on if there's any homework tasks for anyone to come forward with that. And then Clark, on the arts organisations, I know there was a discussion, my memory is hazy. There was a discussion around, you know, how allowing Anthony Roberts from the Arts Centre, Sally Shaw from Thirsety and Steve Manx from the Mercury to come along one evening, you know, that is a very entertaining evening. It's a big line up and actually, you know, we've now got a funding model in place whereby their grant is assured for a four-year term, which hopefully one day will be the way the council will operate with all our elections, but who knows, it's another conversation. But Owen, Clark sir, I mean, what is the thoughts? Are we going to allow the portfolio holder to bring along those three fantastic individuals, organisations? Or are we going to perhaps, well, we saw you last year and we maybe need to see someone else? I don't know. I don't know what the feeling is amongst the room or where we're at.
Well, it certainly wouldn't be my place to say, it'd be up to the panel to discuss how you'd like to approach that. And yes, as you say.
Sorry, the question I guess is what's the historical context on this one? Because my memory is hazy and we change council every year and think, you know, maybe change.
And the context was, as you say, we went from initially an annual presentation from representatives from each one, and then it moved, the funding provision, as you said, moved to being decided once every four years instead of annually. And the panel did talk about this and the effect it would have on the reporting from those organisations. It was, from my memory, it was two strands. Firstly, it was when they reported. And I think my memory is that we were looking at moving it from an annual one to halfway through the four years and then one at the end of the four years. But obviously, this is very much up for the current panel to decide how you would like to approach that. The second strand was what they presented, as you referred to, you know, get a very entertaining presentation from each of the, each of the three organisations about what they're doing. It's been, you know, very, very useful. But I think in the past, some members of the panel have been a bit more keen to get comparison as to the terms of the conditions set on the funding and how the organisations have performed according to those. And I think the last time they came, there was actually more content to do with that rather than, you know, just the razzle dazzle. So if panel wanted to really focus on that, you know, that would be something that you could set out and we could take to those organisations. And, you know, certainly if there are specific parts of the requirements we set on them that you'd like them to focus on, we can give that information to them.
Panel, I'm content with the. Panel, I'm content with the pragmatic approach of seeing them halfway through the funding term and then at the end. I just wanted to check, because I know that that is a relatively new change. It used to be an annual event. But if you're content with that approach, Deputy Chair Willis.
Yeah, Chairman, it's, as you say, it's a really spiffingly good night out to have main arts organisations coming and performing before us. They're really truly entertaining, and they're quality people when it comes to reciting Shakespeare. But what our function as the scrutiny panel is, is not to know how well their artistic programme is going, but just how well their organisation is going. And this is where, I think in the past, we've, we've not quite got the balance right. They want to talk about their performance, their audiences, how well the panto goes, whereas we are more concerned with the nuts and bolts of, you know, are they actually getting out into the schools to do some creative work in the schools? And and these sort of issues. And likewise with Colchester Borough Homes, they do a marvelous presentation on how they're providing homes and how it all fits together and the value of their public service, whereas the panel was more interested in, you know, what is the replication between the back office functions of Colchester Borough Homes and the back office functions of the Amfor companies? Are we paying twice for two project management suites and teams and so on? And they're, and and these organisations seem less happy to talk to us about those sort of issues than they do about their outward facing personas. And I'm, I've never quite understood how we stop them talking about the things they really want to talk about and get them talking about the things that we as a panel are interested, you know, just what value are we getting out for the money that we're putting in and the community is expecting to get from these organisations? So I think probably as a panel, we need to give some further thought to to what it is we want out, because there are things we want to know from all these organisations and a raft of other organisations, but we want to do it in an effective way, which doesn't take up a whole evening on just one of them.
Fair. Thank you, Deputy Chair. Okay. So I think we have it. I think we have it. I think we know what we're doing. Owen, can you remind us the next date of the next meeting and who we are seeing, please?
Yes, the next meeting is the 4th of July, and we've got on the work programme year in performance report, and that will include information on the outgoing strategic plan, action plan. I just wanted to go back to the item that councillor Willis raised so we could look at scheduling that, if that's okay. Now, I think we'll need to take officer advice on when we're likely to be in a position to be able to report. So, Richard, would you be able to?
Yeah, I think that would be doable, and particularly if you look at the work programme with the Safer Culture Partnership, which in after that, you'd be waiting till September, well, actually, the date, the October meeting. So I think it would be sensible to bring at least what we have at that point to the panel. So I think that's doable. On the 4th of July, yes.
Well, I think, given the urgency of of it, that's a really, really good outcome if we're able to do that as best as is possible with the information that is available. Okay, colleagues, I've had a very, very enjoyable Tuesday evening. Does anyone else wish to say anything else? If not.
Can I apologise if I went on a bit too long? I had expected just a rattle through the 10 points without getting an intermediate grilling on each one, so I apologise to my colleague.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to close this evening's meeting and wish you a safe and pleasant journey home.